Everybody will start with the one. Let's believe. Mr. Minkin, will you start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I hear Carol Kim.
No, it's all there.
Oh, maybe he just drove by. Oh, that's where it came out. Okay. First item we have is approval of minutes of the July of the 19th, 2016 regular meeting. You have a motion, please?
Say.
Mr. Curry and Mr. Wilkerson second that motion. Is that an all yes?
Yes.
All yes. Okay. Public comments. Did someone sign in their right?
Yes, sir, Raymond Boggs.
Can I have that, please? This will give you. Carol, catch your breath when she's coming in here. Here's again, the letter.
I did, but you don't do.
The camera started rolling, Carol.
Hey. I swear to God.
It's called passing the buck. All right, we're down to the public comments section of the board agenda. It's just a reminder to everybody, the board meets for, it's a business meeting, but we do allow public comments. When we have public comments, people are allowed to approach the board like Mr. Boggs has wanted to do, but we're not allowed to interact because it's not on our agenda. So it's not that we're ignoring you or anything like that. Anyone who wants to interact with us, if they would contact this pal on the Wednesday before a board meeting, they could actually be on the agenda and then we could talk about whatever it is. But we just want to, we always remind everybody, we're not being rude or anything, but we certainly listen to everybody that speaks to us, but we just, by the, due to the open meetings law, we just can't interact. Okay, Mr. Boggs, Raymond Boggs, he's from Sod and he wants to talk about the subject of drugs. Mr. Boggs.
This, Mr. Lindbergh, he's got to be up a little bit. I'm not against your drug policy to the kids, I want you to understand that. To me, it's the way it came down. I've been drug tested for the last 30 years. I had one done last week. I don't have it done, I can't work. That's just our policy. I feel that any county, or even this county, would pass a five to nothing vote to drug policy. Our students and certain extra activities, like to be driving to school, boat tax, sports, dance, cheerleading, I reckon you're ROTC. I mean, with ROTC, I didn't, I didn't read it, was ROTC being that? I understand, but I can't understand why you want to do our kids. I'm a guardian parent of a child who goes to Lincoln County High. He'll be a junior in school this year. And I can understand, you know, I've been, like I said, I've been known for the last 25, 30 years, and the last 16 years, and lost a year from there, it don't work. That's our policy. That's our union policy. It's a good policy. I go out on the job, I walk in, six o'clock, sign in, give them all my paperwork. You're going to take drug tests, that's fine. Tomorrow, after I earn the date, tomorrow they can randomly. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with doing our students, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, I don't know if there's any 13-year-old kids coming to high school now or not. They'd be close, they'd have to be pretty educated to be, you know, jump the ladder a little bit. I can't understand why the school board wants to do our children, our own school board, the whole school system going to get drug tested. You know, I mean, what's wrong? What's wrong with all of our school system being drug tested? I'm not against it. I'm for it. It's clean our union up and lab for it. I got to work with a man that's going to be 150 feet in there, I don't want him to be safer than I'm safe. I don't want a diabetes, use drugs to kill me. I've said it a few times to people that I've worked with, I said, "I know what you're doing, I'm not working with you." They said, "Why?" I said, "You know why?" They said, "All right, I understand." I said, "You're just too young, let me be tied off, and you just keep me on my length of leg way." I ain't going to go rag him out. Our union, you know, we go talk, we talk to them. We try to help. I've had a man fired one night, tried to get him to go home. I've done it at the job store. Give him drugs. I said, "Go home, I got a representative, they're going to fire you." Guess he got, told me off. What happened, they come and got him, they drug tested him, were alcoholic, and they fired him. I tried to help him, I tried to get him to go home, you know. He was a friend of mine. He could have got somebody killed that night. I can understand why you're wanting to do the boat tax bill, but there is some dangerous tools in there. I've worked with them. Oxygen saddling dangers. My grandson wants Ben Carton, he liked to out weld it, but he couldn't, his class was full. You'll take carton, that's a good, that's a good, you know. I can understand, like I said, I can understand why you want to do boat tax. Like I say, welding, you got oxygen saddling, that's dangerous, that's a dangerous match right there. Carpenter, you got skills on. You've got all kinds of saws you can think of, cut your fingers off. I've got thumbs here about ripped off and having carpenters on the job because of this stuff. You got the welding, but you got, like I said, you got the oxygen saddling there, that's a danger, that's a live bomb in there, because you had to have it in there, like you got it stored outside, run the hoses in, it'd be a little bit safer. You got the, you can blind somebody, hit an arc, somebody's standing there, you can't see nothing, so I'm blind man, if somebody does that way on purpose, you can't see. That's dangerous to a kid's eyes, and that hurts his eyes down the road. I took the location school here in Shattan, two, seven, three. I know what it's like, somebody's done me that way, I couldn't see. It's dangerous. You've got a lot of saws, you've got, you've got a lot of power tools in this location of school. I can understand why you want to sit and drug test it, but I just don't understand why you want to start with our kids and our school teachers, our board members, our secretary, the cooks, they're not drug tested. I mean, I, I, I think they should, because our students are supposed to look up to you guys, the teachers, the principals, we're supposed to look up to everybody. I preach to my grandson every day. I said, "Son, all it gets you is bad. When you get to be bad, you're no good." I preach and preach and preach every day, because these drugs with these kids, I don't care about, but I got to live with them. I can't stop everything. He's my grandson. I love him, he's dead, and I don't want to see him dead over these drugs. I mean, I, I, I reason I'm against doing the kid, I just don't think it's fair, because y'all not being done, but if that's the case, I can't stop it, I can't stop it. I just think it, it shouldn't be a little bit fair with the school board, the teachers, everybody got drug tested first, and the students say, "Hey, at least there being drug tested, we shouldn't be afraid now." He knows I'm drug tested. He went with my dad and I got drug tested. He got over his, over Charleston, he went with me, seen what it's like. But I don't know, maybe it's just, maybe it's me, I mean, I just feel that the kids are getting a bad deal here, especially on the boat tax part. I understand why you want to do the boat tax, but if I refuse to let him, if I refuse to let him be drug tested, he can't be in boat tax. Well, that's taken away part of the dedication. I think that should have been really, really looked at harder. And on the driving part, I love, he doesn't, he don't drive half the time, but he does. I reckon he's involved in that, too. But the location part, I just didn't understand, because if he refused, if I refuse to let him take the drug test, or he refuses himself, he can't get a fair education, because he wants to be in boat tax. Say you've got 400 kids, and extra activity, and you've got 800 kids, 800 students in your school, there's 400, ain't going to get drug tested. How's that fair to the other 400? That's the reason I was coming to speak, to speak my piece, and that's how I feel. I'm not against drug policy, I just wish it had been a little bit fairer, with the school board, and the teachers, and everybody got it done first. From what I gather, from a few people on the board today, that they're going to be in armed and late for the other forces, forces school systems, I don't know why, I don't know what they're hiding, and I don't hide nothing. I mean, like I said, I've been known for 25, 30 years. Every time I get a letter back, it says, "Mr. Boggs, you're negative." That's the way it's gone, that's the way it's all been. I'm hoping next week, they didn't find that in my, last week, they'd be negative this week, when I get my letter back. I don't do nothing, but you can take, you can take pills that you put on the list that you didn't know, you know, like Advil or something. I might take three, sometime I get a migraine headache, I take three of them. I went through the drug test, that money showed up in. You know, I don't know what all they check for, I know they check for a lot of stuff. It's a good thing if you're doing it, I just wish the county would done first, before the students. You probably going to save some kids' lives, and that's good. I just wish, like I keep saying, I wish y'all would have been done first, because the students are supposed to look up to you, me, me being a teacher, I don't know. Larry, one of my teachers, he was a science teacher, then he was, he was principal of that school. We all looked up to them, because they made us do what we were told to do. That's what it should be with the students. Then my grandson has our issues, because he's not my son. He's my grandson. His award committee's a court, there were some technicalities, but he loved, he's always loved me, always stayed with me before this happened. I preach to him, always tell him, "Be good." I do have one thing, I'm about to drug, you could probably answer, somebody give me an answer. The boy missed one day of school, and he came home with a report card, said he missed two days of school. How's that happen? How does that happen? How does that happen? He was in school every day for 179 days, and they said he had 178 days he was at, and he was present at school. He was in school 179 days. And I got one more thing that y'all, everybody here needs to know, and you need to address. If you're going to let these kids go to Kings Island or somewhere, and they're going to be, I'm six, 12 hours, go down there and back during the school week, they should not have to be subject to being in school the next day, they'll become present, which my grandson was counted absent. That's the only day he missed, five days before school. The only day he missed, because he was so tired, he said, "I don't want to go to school," and had to go before the principal for sweetening fast. That's how tired he was. That is a policy you need to look at, for the, for the kids that's going on these kinds of trips during the weekday. He got counted absent, because he was so sorry, so tired, he didn't want to go to school. But I can't understand how, he can go 179 days to school, and he only got credit for 178. He, that's the only day he missed, he got the Kings Island trip the next day. He went on a Tuesday, and expected to be in school on Wednesday. I should, y'all need to check into that and really change that policy. Either don't let them go during the week, or they don't have to come to school the next day, and they're counted present. He was supposed to be counted present for 179 days, and somebody at that high school missed a day on him. Because those days, they, they called my house and leave me a computer message, saying, "Your son is either absent or late for school." I called the school, and they said, "Well, he's in school." And I said, "Well, y'all just left me a message and said my grandson wasn't in school." And he was in school. I text him on his telephone, he said, "I'm right here, he's in school." He didn't want to text me back, but he texted me, and I knew he was in school. That's a policy I need to, please, please look here, too, because it ain't fair to him, I mean, he'd have a perfect attendance. He would have had 180 days, but somewhere in that school system, they shot him out one day, in that Kings Island trip, shot him out, I don't know. He was just too tired to come back to school. He said, "Papa, do I have to go to school?" I said, "Well, you're going to break your perfect attendance." He said, "I was too tired, I can't hold my head up." And he, and he had one day missed, but somehow this high school cost him two days. I don't know how they did it, but they did it. But thank you all for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs.
I do know Larry and Curry and Minkin, and I just know y'all's names.
Hopefully we'll be meeting.
I know Mr. Lindbergh, and I talk to Raymond Timmy.
Everybody talk to Raymond. Okay, that was the only person we had to sign in today, so let's go to the administrative section, please. Do you have a motion? Carol. Second, my friend. Okay.
Item A is a contracted services agreement with Chief Logan Resort for accommodations package on August the 7th to 9th, 2016, for Duval PKA professional development training, according to the terms of the agreement, which is attached, and it's funded through Title I. Item B is a contract with Mary Coolr to provide professional learning for county math teachers on August the 12th, 2016, according to the terms of the contract, which is attached, and this is funded through Title II. And the teachers will, what they're receiving is training on the duly revised college and career readiness teams. We have some resources that we'll give the teachers on that day. And the same with item C is, Mary Coolr, item D is working with the high school teachers, and under item C, the contract with Lynn Baker for professional learning of county math teachers on August 12th, is for our elementary and middle school teachers, who provide math instruction. Item D, approval to post a new professional position for third grade teacher at Hamlin PKA due to enrollment numbers effective with the 2016-17 school week. And we had discussed it last meeting, with any of those issues, with earlier labor club students in our class.
I thought, I just want to ask you, that wasn't one you all discussed last time. Do you might have any questions on any of those things, on administrative? If not, call for a question. Is that an all yes, buddy, on the administrative items?
Yes.
Yeah, let's go to the finance section, please. You have a motion? Mr. Wilkerson?
Second.
Second, Mr. Baker? Mr. Allen?
We have a attached list of invoices that total $214,864.90. If you got any questions, just let me know, we can go forward, and you can answer your question right here.
Everything seem to be going okay in the finance sector, right?
So far.
So far, so good.
Now, for me, I'm learning something new every day.
Good, good. All right, the finance items, is that an all yes, buddy?
Yes.
All right, let's go to the personnel section, have a motion, please. Rowdy made the motion?
Second.
Second, my friend, I know. Mr. Lindbergh, I almost looked the wrong way, I caught myself.
Okay, yeah, there's a revised one there, as you can see. Item A, employment professional personnel pending renewal first class permit. Item B, employment professional personnel pending insurance, first class permit. Item C, employment of extracurricular personnel. And D, retirements and resignations. And you also, we have a posting currently out, it's up until four o'clock today, so we'll just get some of that on there, but there'll be a lot more on there, too. So we have a posting.
Are you mean?
Yes, yes. And if you want to look at this sheet, I'll kind of update that. Midway, the fifth grade job's currently posted, the first grade's currently posted, go down to four o'clock today. The third grade, Mr. Minkip and I talked to Don Davis, we're hoping, there's two students that they weren't coming back, and there's a couple students maybe going to another district. That may take care of it, we're not 100% sure, but Mr. Davis is working on it, we're working on it to try to prevent that. Duval math currently posted, we do have one certified candidate that has applied so far, which is great. The PK in the fifth grade is posted. And Hamlin, the kindergarten is four over, let's just kind of wait and see, the first day, and see how many we have. Third grade, of course, was 11 over, and we'll post that tomorrow. West Hamlin, what we're looking at is grade one, they have three teachers, and talked to John this morning, Mr. Roy, and they have 75 students, which is a max. So that's a wait and see, so if two or three move in, we'll have to do something, but if somebody leaves, we're, we're okay there. The fifth grade currently is two over, so we will have to address that the first day, when the students come back. County Valley, we have a math currently posted, Ranger's okay, Hart is the same group, special education and health. A high school, four special ed, a business, a public safety position, we'll have that for you next Tuesday. Two social studies, as you noticed, Mr. Gabe King resigned also with Canal County. One is currently posted, one will be posted tomorrow, but we have three or four certified candidates in, in social studies that are applying for these, these jobs, so I think we'll be able to stay there. My biggest concern is, is the special ed and possibly the math that got, I think the elementary, we'll get elementary people, because there's four elementary people out there, and there are other subjects looking for jobs.
Anybody have any additional questions? Bill, how many cycles will we have for teachers' records there? Two more, I mean, advertisements?
Yes, they've been posting tomorrow, which will go down next Tuesday at four o'clock, so.
Might be August 2nd or July 2nd.
August 2nd, and then we'll, we've talked about having an additional meeting on August the 10th. We'll know at that point how many more we need to hire, and let you know whether we need to have, which we'll post again on August the 3rd, and that'll come down Tuesday, August the 9th. So we would have that all day Wednesday, to interview, to get people in place to go into schools on 11th, which is the first day.
Mr. Baker, stand.
Yes.
There are three cycles.
It could be three, yes.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, nothing else, then? Is that an all yes on the personnel items?
Yes.
Do so reluctantly, with Bernie's name on there, Carol? But Ray, he's, he's got big shoes to fill, Pete. Okay, let's go to comments. Board members, you have anything? Mr. Minkin?
Okay, I've had a request, actually, a couple different occasions this past year, from the high school administration, as well as the cross-country coach, who is, which is Craig Atkins, for a need to have an assistant for cross-country, due to the fact that oftentimes when the boys and girls compete, even though they're competing in the same location, on the same day, that oftentimes they split them up, and they go in two different areas or directions to compete, which I don't fully understand how they, you know, that takes place, but it creates a situation where there's no supervision for one group of kids, or the coach is going back and forth between the two locations. So they requested that we create an assistant coach for cross-country to deal with that matter, and Mr. Lindbergh, I, we've been talking about this for a few days, the head coach makes $1,000 for the season. Kicking around the idea that maybe this would be a $500 assistant coach position. It's my understanding that Mr. Atkins does have someone in mind, someone that's interested, I should say.
Who's the head coach?
It's our, one of our ROTC instructors, Craig Atkins.
Do you know how many students participate in cross-country?
I think last year there was approximately 17 to 18. And what happens is, they, they'll leave, and they'll all get there at the same time, but they have to go to a certain point to start, and the girls will be there, or the boys will be there, and everybody else is left over in the bleachers, and the coach has to go to one place, and kids are left unsupervised. There was four students last year than there had been previously. So it's, it's, the concern is just the fact that there's audience supervision, at these meetings.
There is a girls', yes. Is there? I'm having the numbers of each gender here. How does this differ from another sport where you would have the boys and the girls?
When the boys and the girls track, of course, oftentimes, they may not practice at the same time, limited equipment, facilities that we have, or, you know, depending on the numbers, how many students are competing.
That's what I'm saying, how many?
Well, in terms of a track meet, the boys and girls will run back-to-back events in the same venue. Cross-country, you literally, and I may be wrong, it's my understanding of it, you don't run on a track, you run through the woods.
That's right.
So you may have two or three different cross-country tracks marked off by ribbons or banners, so that you could have boys running on this side of the mountain, and girls running over, you know, a mile away over here on a different track. And that's, that's what I take from what we've heard from them today. I don't know anything about girls' country, but other than the fact that you run through the woods, fields, the dells, the valleys, so.
Also, track, we have a, a male and a, a girls' coach and a male and a. Well, that's why I'm just trying to see what the, why there's a difference.
No, we don't. I don't think so.
It's in our. I don't just find it sad that a day it does indicate to, to boys and the girls.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, you know, if there, if there is, why there would be a difference in this sport versus any other sport. If both boys and girls are competing, does Title I require you, you know, if you've got girls' basketball, you've got boys. I mean, it does mean that the coach has to be that same gender, of course, but they're both having somebody supervising. It just.
Now you go, who was the girls' track coach this past year? Do I know? My daughter ran, and Tim's the only person I ever saw coaching him.
He was the only person that would.
He may have been a boy team, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, he's probably on a little roll, but.
There is two jobs.
But in, in terms of what Steve asked, how would one person supervise a track versus needing two in cross-country? I think that's what Steve was asking. Like, one, one track coach, given one, could supervise both the males and females, unless they had different meets at different places, which I don't think happened, but in cross-country, you're just separated by distance. You got people strung out, I don't know, across enough a track, you get anything about? Eight, 10, 12 miles long through the woods and.
I know that for five hundred degrees.
So, I mean, it. I mean, even if it's five miles, and you have kids strung out all along that track, I mean, if, if you might have two coaches over just one team. Well, I mean, I assume you've got parents that are there, but.
I'm just trying to see why it's different, or if it is different than any other sport that's on.
It's different, it's like, I mean, you'd have both in the same, maybe both have wind field, but one might be on one side of the river, and one on the other. I, I'm just, I'm making an extreme example, but they wouldn't be running around a paved track with bleachers, and everybody's watching all the athletes just back-to-back bins.
We could do a little research. No, I just, I'm just, I'm still. I'm just trying to understand. Solid numbers, it's been a while since I've spoken to Mr. Atkins, I don't feel.
Well, the point, I think, is I'm just thinking, you need two people regardless of what they're calling.
That's the concern.
Why wouldn't you need a, a boys' and girls' head coach versus a, a, a coach and assistant coach?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what Steve says.
Just trying to save them money.
Oh, I'm with you on that.
I, I don't disagree with that anyway. I'm just, I'm just trying to think about it, or think. Okay. Do you think, you can think a whole lot of times, but.
We'll come back to it. I was just, I was wanting to think, I sent you an email, I wanted to share with you publicly that we, we do have a new bid for the work on the football field. Mr. Ferguson contacted me yesterday, as a matter of fact, with, with the information. There'll be a pre-bid meeting on August the 9th, 2016, at 1:30, and that, that's going to be here at the central office. And then the actual bid opening will be on August the 23rd, at 1:30 here at the board office. It's already been, the advertisement's gone out, well, we're delivered, I think. Debbie Willard dropped it on.
It'll be next week's paper.
Now, either one of you gentlemen recall now, when that seemed, do they obtain the documents here, or is that through the RPTAC?
They contact the RPTAC.
Yes, just like the other one.
Just like the previous.
Your favorite process.
No update, I still have any, any more information to share with you regarding the ramps. The ramp was there, well, there, I, I sent an email yesterday to Mr. Ferguson, he's not responded. The last conversation we had with him was the day some others met with him over to look at the football field, and he indicated at that time that he would have another contractor come and take a look at that situation, and give us some, some feedback, but it hasn't occurred. As soon as I hear something from him, I'll, I'll let you know. Just wonders this summer weather with extreme heat, and it's caused expansion of more cracking, and.
Well, with all the rain, I'll say, with all the heat.
Really, Anthony, does he run it anywhere? Okay. Anybody else have anything? Well, it's not, let's adjourn this meeting to August the 2nd, 2016, at 6:00 here at the office in Hamlin.